I am here. Yeah, because that's the arrow.
Yes.
Or maybe one.
That's not a problem. It's okay.
I have. Oh, I can't.
Two hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred. I put rocket gas in the lake. They love gas.
Uh, no, no, no.
I love the rocket gas.
I don't care.
Four twenty-four gallons. And shit, you know, that's good. Okay. No, I could. Yeah. Rocket gas, USA gas. Yeah, one, you're one of one of them. I'm surprised that it's a big six, wouldn't run right.
What happened to him?
The big, big six would go right.
As if you, you were gonna be with Chelsea, I hope you. You didn't. You know. I told you.
Um.
I told you. I told you.
Whatever. I haven't checked yet, but ten bucks. Then the gas lights on, then that's okay. We're not ten bucks for this.
Uh, you should have just stayed at.
I just filled it up for you. Ten bucks. Ten dollars to get nowhere. Yeah, I know, that's taking it.
They said, well, they're best.
Why, why stop for ten bucks?
San Diego, San Marcos.
I'll make twenty dollars. Yeah, we took it all.
Well, guess who's gonna come out of the car with death? You are. Guess who's not coming out of the car with death?
Three hundred bucks.
No. I go to Chelsea's. I don't have to pay taxes. I don't pay taxes.
Well, what?
No.
The only one I might pay this.
I don't have to pay taxes next month.
Jackie, I, that's it.
You know how much I pay us?
Yeah. I don't know. You know, we're back. He looked at ninety-five, right?
My son must.
He paid a hundred thirty-five.
I don't wanna look. Cause I don't think, yeah, see, I don't wanna take on.
I know, Jackie, he can go too. Maybe he had a draft. He took two doors. Okay.
That's not.
She was the only one on her street. Well, she probably had less himself, too. Mine. If you leave.
Good.
Yep.
I said, you didn't mean to show up again like I did last time.
No, what happened?
She came over for her birthday that.
Yeah. But you don't know what I'm starting. Really, really.
Can you say?
You can tell a thank you.
We're always, she knows we're complaining, yes, and.
I know.
She has nothing on her.
Free range.
Really, you're learning your business.
Right. She likes to go home because it's not very big. She doesn't pay rent.
Doesn't matter, you didn't buy a rent.
But she won't go to service. Like, my business.
She can go ahead. It's your. Julie's wanting to help me wrong, like she's got trapped.
She already know about that.
Oh, yeah. We had a big talk before you got.
Good.
I can't see the impression. He has got.
Anyway. We're, we're. Anyway. What, what I would do, what I would.
I didn't ask. I don't, I didn't ask. I didn't ask.
Oh, yeah.
Who cares?
Ask.
Who asked?
But anyway, you know, I.
Don't be asked. You don't be caring. I don't, who cares? I'm not this big.
Yeah.
I'm here for you. I'm literally wearing that blue sweater.
But anyways.
Of course. Blue sock. I like the dog.
So. The other. And the prior.
Which is good. You guys is getting hot. Sorry. Wow.
Hello, Rabbi.
But what I, what I.
Show some solidarity.
I'm here. Shut up, Cyrus.
Hope you haven't tried to wait yet. That's true.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order for, uh, May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. And if we could, please, uh, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we have an invocation this evening from Rabbi Yellen, from the Aleph Hebrew School. Welcome.
Good evening. As we gather here during the American Jewish Heritage Month, I would like to extend in my name and in the name of the Jewish community of San Marcos, our good wishes and blessings to the mayor and city officials. May God Almighty bestow upon the leaders of this great city, good health and the wisdom to continue in the path of justice and morality. Almighty God bless these individuals elected by the people in whom faith and confidence have been placed to legislate laws, making decisions that will affect the lives of their citizens. Grant that these honorable community leaders assembled here be aware of your presence and let them recognize that this is not only a great honor and civic responsibility, but a holy endeavor as well. May the seat of San Marcos serve as a beacon of light for people of all faith and walks of life to achieve the goal so powerfully stated in our Pledge of Allegiance, so that America is truly one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And let us all say, amen.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Skolik, could we please have the roll call?
Councilmember Musgrove?
Here.
Councilmember Nunez?
President.
Councilmember Maricinella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Okay, if the council could please, uh, come down to the front with me. We have a few presentations. So in San Marcos, we have a lot of people that come forward, uh, time and time again that serve our community, and that includes our kids. So I know you guys aren't exactly kids, our youth in, uh, San Marcos. So I, uh, recently, we had a, uh, diversity town hall, uh, that was put on by our youth commission. It was a fabulous event, the very first one of its kind. And so I was so impressed, I thought we should definitely make sure we bring them to our council meeting and recognize our efforts because it really was an amazing time. Everyone brought together, um, a lot of, uh, sharing of cultures, uh, tables that were explaining a lot of, uh, the, um, uh, the culture and the, do we have some pictures up there? Yeah. And then, uh, some of the things that are notable to the cultures and food even, and then, and then we also had a lot of dancing. So there were all these, um, beautiful dances that, that were included. So I'd like to bring up our youth commissioners, uh, this evening. We have Natalie Johnson. Okay, Natalie. Jasmine Hassan? No Jasmine. Okay, we're not doing, we're not doing well right now. I'll, I'll let you, uh, you have these. Uh, Harish Sarah Van Kumar? Did I say that okay? Come on up here, Harish. I'm gonna have you stand over here for a minute. Thank you very much for your work on it. Um, and if you could just stand over there, that would be great. Uh, Cyrus Farhumin? Nikita Judd Hav?
Thanks so much.
Of course. Chelsea Johnson? No Chelsea. Megan Hanks? I know you're here. Really appreciate you.
Of course.
Okay, Natra Gopal. Oh, gosh. Okay, I'm gonna have to put my reading gl- glasses on for this. Could you help me out here? Is it Bokal Krishan? Krishnan? Gopal Krishnan?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. And they did a lot of work. You would, you would have been impressed, too. And then we have Rena Damian? Nope. Nicholas Damian? Nope, that's right. And then Reed Emoto. So who is going to be doing the speaking to talk about where this idea came from? And, uh.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Do you want me to, or do you want to? Okay.
How about the two of you? How about that? And I'm gonna give you these.
I can start. All right, so the, first of all, um, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners for all having us tonight. It's a pleasure for us to be here. Um, we came up with this event, or there was a similar event prior to this. I think it was called Kids Connect to Culture. And, um, we just kinda based the idea off of that. And we just wanted an, I, like, a way for the community to kinda get involved, but also know, like, all the different cultures, because obviously we know that they exist, but to actually be able to go in depth and kinda learn about each one and everything. Um, it was really neat and it was all a learning experience for all of us to actually have to plan it all of ourselves. Um, but I'll let Nikita go from there.
Thank you. Um, we also just noticed, going further off of what Megan said, we also just noticed there's a lot of diversity in, like, the community of San Marcos, but sometimes there's not always this place for everyone to kinda come together and be able to celebrate that and cherish that. Like, there's a lot of pockets within San Marcos and to be able to have this and see, like, all these cultures at once, um, reflected in the demographics of San Marcos and just seeing them all together, together in such a celebration was really, um, I don't know, I think it was very empowering in a sense. Um, and I think it was just exciting to see all of that. And like Megan mentioned, um, that was kind of like our foundation or spark for the idea. But then, um, prior to the pandemic, there was Kids Connect to the Culture, where in the library, we would read, um, stories to, like, kids, but we wanted to be able to expand that and take that further and then also ramp things up after the pandemic. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read the, uh, certificate and then I also wanna give some honorable mentions to the dance groups because they were really remarkable. Um, anyway, these, we're presenting you with these today with the Honorable Certificates of Recognition for Organizing the Diversity Town Hall Event, which celebrated diversity in our city of San Marcos during National Diversity Month. This public event treated citizens to performances, demonstrations, and food tastings from different cultures in San Marcos. We, the City of San Marcos, the City Council, are proudly congratulating you for this amazing event and we just thank you so much for your service. So I would like to, uh, give special thanks to Narithal, Narith Yalia, uh, Dance Academy, representing South Asia and India, the San Diego Kimono Club, representing East Asia and Japan, the Bushakin Karate Dojo, representing East Asia and Japan, and then the Saint Petka Orthodox Church, with the Avala Folklore Ensemble, representing Serbia. And I, I am definitely not overstating this. It was an amazing event. Um, I, I actually was like, well, I'm just gonna stay for a little bit. I think I stayed almost, yeah, the whole time because it was so interesting and it was really enjoyable. So next year, when, when, you are having it next year, right?
I will not be here.
Someone's going to, to pu- pick up the torch, aren't they? Okay, you're, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna count on you. Anyway, um, I hope that you can all, uh, join us in that. Uh, it was really a great, great event. And then if we could take a quick picture, if we don't mind? And I feel like the lighting is actually better here. I like that in the background, but I don't feel like the lighting's very good. So you guys get to come in and, uh, shake everyone's hand if you'd like. Um, and then we're gonna just take a picture together.
Really appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
It's your last year.
She's graduating.
Uh, I am on my second year.
Oh, wow.
Okay, just scooch on in. We're just gonna. And thank you to the proud parents that made sure that they were able to do such a great thing. Took a lot of work. So anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you. Of course. All right.
Okay, high five. Thanks, you guys. And next year, you're doing it, right? Oh, every. And then who can I give these? Perfect. Thank you, Amber. And then Amber Cox, our staff member. Thank you for all that you did. Really appreciate it. You go over and above every time, Amber. Okay, so next we have, uh, the Jewish American Heritage Month. We have Rabbi Yellen, uh, with us today, again, uh, from the Aleph Hebrew School. So I'm going to read this. If you wanna come on up. And he has his lovely wife here this evening, too. So the San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes the Jewish American Heritage Month. Where, whereas Jewish Americans have been an important part of the American story and have greatly contributed to all areas of American life and culture since our nation's earliest days. And whereas, on April twentieth, two thousand six, the federal government proclaimed May as Jewish American Heritage Month, stating, as a nation of immigrants, the United States is better and stronger because Jewish people from all over the world have chosen to become American citizens. And since then, proclamations in support of Jewish American Heritage Month have been made by Presidents of the United States annually. And whereas Jewish Americans connect to their Jewish identity in a variety of ways, such as culturally, ethnically, religiously, and by following Jewish ethics and values. Whereas, San Marcos shares in this connection to celebrate the contributions of Jewish Americans in all facets of civic life and stand with the Jewish American community in creating solidarity and more unified city and country. And whereas, we celebrate the rich and diverse heritage of the Jewish American community, including those who live, work, and play in San Marcos, and therefore, be it resolved that the City of San Marcos continues to support the Jewish community, the diversity of Jewish American heritage and culture into future programs, activities, and ceremonies throughout the year. Presented this day, May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Please.
Okay.
Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor Jones. I mean, we know each other for a long time and I can, I'm a, I'm a witness of your, your support, uh, towards the Jewish community, towards any community. The, the, the light of the diversity that exists in San Marcos is truly inspiring. And as you said, the Jewish people, the American people, we all share the same pursuit for justice, tolerance, and freedom. And there is no better place for someone like me as a rabbi to be promoting these values than the City of San Marcos. So thank you, you and all the city officials for doing such a great job.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you.
We appreciate you.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Of course. Okay. Then we have National Public Works Week. Darren. I was like, where is he? There you are. Darren Chamow is receiving this this evening. So the City of San Marcos Public Works Department handles operations and maintenance of city parks, landscaping, streets, drainage, drainage, traffic signals, and the city vehicle and equipment fleet, and all of the outdoor lighting. In addition, the department administers the engineering activities relating to traffic operations, transportation engineering and design, and construction management of the city's capital improvement program. And one of the things that you might not all know, but if you recall, we used to have this little thing called the San Marcos Creek that used to flood all the time. In the middle of the night, our public works, uh, folks would get up and they would have to go out and, uh, divert traffic, put up the, uh, barriers so that people didn't drive in the creek, which they often did. And so you're welcome that we are finally getting that, uh, fixed here in, in San Marcos. But we appreciate all of, uh, our, I call them the, our unsung heroes because they do, certainly do a lot of work within our city. And a lot of people don't realize the, the reason that we have such beautiful parks and beautiful roads and all of that is because our public works people work, uh, day and night and it's, uh, a lot of work. So anyway, I am going to read this proclamation real quick. So the San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes National Public Works Week, which is May twenty-first through the twenty-seventh. Whereas, public works professionals focus on the infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health and high quality of life the residents and businesses of San Marcos expect. And whereas, these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our residents. And whereas, it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children in San Marcos to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, this year marks the sixty-third annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. Therefore, we, the City Council of the City of San Marcos, do res- do hereby designate the week of May twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, as National Public Works Week. And we urge all citizens to join with the representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, ceremonies that are designed to pay tribute to all of our public works professionals, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make in protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. And if you're at a park and you happen to see one of our, uh, our guys working there, uh, guys and gals, uh, make sure that you thank them because they really do a great job here in the city of San Marcos, which is why we're known as San Parkos. So anyway, thank you, Darren.
Thank you so much.
Of course. Did you have anything you'd like to say?
Um.
Oh, sorry to put you on the spot.
That's okay. Uh, we really appreciate all the support that the council always gives us. Um, the residents are always really nice when they interact with our staff out in the field. Um, and you guys are always great champions for the work that the staff does. So we're very thankful for that.
Well, you make us look good. So we appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. And we're gonna just take a quick picture. Really appreciate it. Okay. All right. Now we can go sit down. So we have, uh, one more, which is, I'm sorry, two more, uh, presentation by the school district. And, uh, Dr. Anthony, or Anthony, why am I calling you that? I'm sorry, Andy Johnson is here presenting. He's our superintendent. And then also, uh, Dr. Tiffany Campbell, our deputy superintendent, and Lizzy.
Lesia.
Lesia Waglers. And you know, um, we've actually met before. Um, she's one of our coordinators and you are doing a great job. So many of you may not know, but, uh, we actually were able to use some of our, and I'm sorry if I'm stealing part of your thunder. Um, but we used some of our American Rescue Funds, uh, because we saw that there was a huge need in our community. And, uh, so it's, it's such an honor to, uh, be partnering with you on this. And I'll let you, uh, take it away and, and tell everyone about it at home and in our audience of, of what we're doing together and the remarkable work that you are, uh, doing for our community.
Thank you, Mayor Jones, and thank you to the city council. That's precisely why we are here. So I'm sure the council is aware. Uh, first, yes, my name is Andy Johnson. I'm the superintendent in San Marcos Unified, very proud superintendent of the best school district in the world. And I'm sure the council is aware that the, uh, mental health needs, the strains on students have been on the rise for a number of years now, uh, not only in San Marcos, but across the state and across the country, really. The, and the pandemic, of course, didn't do anything but exacerbate those problems. So in the school district, we are focused on, on ensuring that our students are academically, uh, prepared for college and career and then, and their, and their future lives. And we can't do that without adequately addressing their mental health needs. So, uh, with the generous support of the city council, we are, we're able to put in place, uh, some very exciting proj- uh, projects and programs this year to address the, the student's mental health. And it's really just one prong of a, of a multi-pronged effort that we're, that we're engaged in, um, throughout the school year. So I wanted to, uh, we, we appreciate the opportunity to come and kinda give you a little update on what we've been up to. So with that, I'll introduce our deputy superintendent, Dr. Tiffany Campbell.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Thank you, City Council, for allowing us to speak today. So I will say that Dr. Johnson stole some of our thunder, as he often does. So why the focus on mental health and wellness? I will say that this partnership really was born from ideas and that came from the pandemic and questions that we had about what was happening with our students when they came back and what we saw. Um, and it really was conversations of what we saw in our school district, as well as what our council members and our mayor was seeing, um, in our city. So, things that are not a surprise to any of us of how this is a growing need. The headlines you see often everywhere of teens' brains are aged faster during the first year of the pandemic. It's life or death, the mental health crisis among U.S. teens. If we think about one of the lasting things that have come, that has come out of the pandemic, it is really this epidemic, really, of a mental health crisis that we are seeing within our youth. And it is a problem that spans socioeconomics. It expands, it spans any type of demographics. We are seeing it across the board, within our city, within our state, within the nation. So the opportunity to partner with our city and wrap our arms around our young people, um, has really been a gift for us. When we talk about this being on the forefront of the state, it truly is on the forefront of the state. Um, when our state superintendent of education talks about transforming California schools, one of the key pillars of that is mental health programs and how we are supporting the mental health, um, of our students. So there has been a huge push, um, not just within our school district, but within the state itself, on providing supports for our students. So this is a multi-layered cake, if you will, um, of how we are supporting the needs of our students. So we have been able to partner with our county on various programs related to suicide prevention, intervention, and postvention. We have, um, been able to partner with the Department of Education on a multi-tiered system of support, which Lesia is gonna talk a little bit more about. But our big push this year has come from this partnership of a huge mental health campaign and helping our students really to take away the stigma of talking about their mental health and helping them to find ways to connect to support providers, be that, uh, trusted adult or be that someone outside of our, outside of the school district, connecting them to others outside of the school district. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lesia, who is a piece of our puzzle with our mental health campaign. And I do want to shout out two people who are in the audience, who are also, um, kind of the heart and soul of this, of this campaign. Um, Kristy Freas, our director of student services, and Amy V., who is our PIO, who is helping us, um, really get this out in front of the public. So with that, Lesia, I turn it over to you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Jones and councilmembers. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be with here, with you here today and sharing, um, the great things that we're doing in San Marcos, thanks to our partnership with you. So in education, we use a lot of acronyms. So MTSS is that multi-tiered system of support. Um, and at the heart of MTSS is equity. It's providing students what they need, when they need it. We're making student-centered, data-driven decisions, um, data-informed decisions throughout the process. Um, and that multi-layered cake, Dr. Campbell, um, shared, I love that, is this triangle here. So that tier-one level is that universal support that we provide to every student simply by being a San Marcos Unified. So that tier one level is that universal support that we provide to every student simply by being a San Marcos Unified student. So in addition to those school-based supports that our students are receiving from their school counselors, from their school social workers, we have some robust social emotional learning that our K through eight students receive. We have some curriculum that supports that. And at that high school level, too, we have some additional programming to support students in that social emotional arena. We also have multiple student surveys, again, to provide that student voice, elevate that, what they're experiencing, and I'll share a little bit more about what that looks like. And throughout the year, we have robust, ongoing professional development for our staff in areas such as trauma-informed care, restorative practices, supporting all of our students, including our LGBTQ students, providing safe and inclusive environments for all of our students. And what's new is that mental health campaign, which is that tier one universal support. I'll be sharing more examples of that. At that tier two or targeted level support, we have our school counselors and social workers doing amazing things, running small groups for students with anxiety, with some other, you know, concerns that arise. And this year, we've also partnered with the Crisis Text Line, and I'll share with you a little bit more about that, and also Care Solus. And that intensive, individualized support at that tier three level, again, our school counselors and social workers, our boots on the ground, doing unfortunately suicidal ideation screenings, connecting with our family, providing that wrap support that the students need. But we've also added an extra layer of support, not to supplement what's happening at the school sites, but to support and supplement what's happening at the school sites as well. So at that tier level, that intensified, individualized support, we've added wellness teams. So each wellness team is comprised of a school-based mental health professional. They have a background in school counseling and school social work. They could be school psychologists as well, but we currently have folks that have that social work and counseling background. And they are paired with a family and community engagement liaison or specialist. So each team, each peer, is regionalized and they support all of our school sites in San Marcos Unified School District. Our school administrators are referring students and families that just need that hand-holding, that individualized support that, not because the counselors and social workers are not able to provide it, but the level is so high currently that they're just that added layer of support. And so they've been going out and doing home visits and removing those barriers for our students and families to reengage in school. And I have the privilege of working with them and consulting with them and supporting them throughout this process. So we currently have three teams, so a total of six people, supporting our school district. And because of the need, we're in the process of adding additional teams to support the district. So we're really excited about that. And the feedback that we've been receiving from our community, from our school sites, about that level of support has been wonderful. So that is our wellness team currently. At that tier two, kind of intensive support, targeted support, is we've partnered with the National Crisis Text Line. So this Crisis Text Line has actually been around for some time, but they have a partnership where we can create our own specific San Marcos tagline. So if a student texts 741741 with SMUSD, they will collect data on their end that we can see who's reaching out, when they're reaching out, and the reasons that they're reaching out. And so this provides our students, actually anyone in our community, the ability to have someone that they can reach out to, whether they're not ready to talk to someone specifically or during summer break, summer break's coming up or after hours. And we know that a lot of our students, you know, when they're in their thoughts, when they're home, when it's late, and we want them to be able to reach out to someone and we recognize that the need is there even during non-school hours. But the feedback that's also been great that's come out of that is a student shared that they could even use this Crisis Text Line to support a friend because we know that sometimes our students go to their friends and their peers before they actually have, you know, they reach out to a trusted adult. And so now students have something that they can also use as a tool to help their friends and peers. So that's wonderful. And again, it's collecting data for us that as a district we can look at and ensure that we have the supports necessary for our students as well. And what you see on the right is actually these crisis cards that we have that all of our social workers and counselors will have for their offices. As a former middle school counselor myself, I always loved leaving students with a positive affirmation. So on one side, you'll see a positive affirmation. And on the back, you'll see kind of what they can do if they're in a crisis. And we know that for a student, it doesn't have to be that they have suicidal ideation for it to be a crisis. They could just feel lonely. As a middle school counselor, that's what I heard a lot. Our students are lonely and they don't know who to turn to. So this is just an added layer of support for them to be able to reach out to someone. We've also brought in Care Solus. And Care Solus is that link, it's that bridge for our students, our staff and our families that need that extra layer of support, that mental health connection. Prior, like coming out of the pandemic, what we saw is that our students needed to be connected to ongoing therapy. Our school staff provides short-term support, but a lot of our students and family members really need that ongoing support. But the best that we could do prior to having a Care Solus was say, you know your insurance card? Call that number on the back. They'll be able to help you. What's great is that Care Solus will help families with as many phone calls as it takes to get them connected in a timely manner to that mental health support that they need. And again, this is not only for our students, it's for our staff. And we know that our staff are humans, too. They're supporting our students in more ways than just their math and reading. And to have this added layer of support for them is really wonderful. And we also know that students might be experiencing things at home as well. So we're able to connect a family to the support. And what's great, again, back to that data-informed decision-making, is that we get ongoing data from Care Solus about the number of what we call warm handoffs, those connections from a school to Care Solus. Currently, we have about 400 warm handoffs that have occurred since we launched. And the top two reasons have been anxiety and depression. Not surprising based on a lot of the things that we're hearing as well. But it's just another added layer of support that allows us to connect our students and families and staff to that support that they need as well. And what we're here to share about is that mental health campaign that we're really excited about and really grateful for all of you to elevate this and see the need of supporting our students and our school communities. We launched our mental health campaign in January. It's kind of hard to think that it's been such a short amount of time and we've already seen such a great impact. And we've been hearing from our community members what this campaign has meant to them. We actually interviewed students this morning at San Marcos High School and just the stories coming out of that is just really impactful. And it's what we do, it's why we do what we do. So since the launch in January, we've taken a multi-faceted approach to rolling out the messaging of what services we have available for our students and families. And thanks to the amazing work of JPW, which you're all familiar with. And of course, on our end, Amy has been instrumental in ensuring that that messaging gets out. We have been sending emails out, social media, graphics, flyers, brochures. You see, we have our lapel pins. We have swag that we're giving to students that have that Let's Face It Together messaging on it. And we also have a lot of posters and decals on every one of our San Marcos Unified campuses and also into the community as well. And so that brand is becoming so familiar to our students and our families. And that's the idea, right, that we're signaling safety and care and concern for their whole well-being throughout the districts as well. So May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And the wellness team, who normally supports in that intensive, individualized care, has been out at every one of our San Marcos campus, handing out buttons, stickers, engaging with our students, to just have those conversations be visible and start talking about mental health. From the littles, you'll see a picture of elementary school, middle school, high school. They're out there engaging with our students and just being that warm, friendly face that our students need to let them know, like, all feelings are valid, you know? It's okay to not be okay sometimes, but if you're in that space, there's someone there to support you. Here are some examples of some of the visuals that we have on our campuses. We have these great wall, it's not a clean, a decal that has that call to action for students to know that they're not alone. And if they need that support, we have that Crisis Text Line. Or go to a trusted adult. There's someone there for you. You're not alone. And we want to ensure that they get that message on an ongoing basis. Or we have your back, right, we're there to support you. And some of the, that other tier one level support is those student surveys that I shared. This year, we've added a mental health module to the California Healthy Kids Survey, which has provided some great data. It's not wonderful data, right, but it's data that helps us know what our students need so that we can then address that need through that multi-pronged approach. We have the Panorama Education. It's a platform that helps, that's a student survey that kind of checks in on their emotional well-being. And again, it provides us that student data that is also actionable. So Panorama actually lets us identify students that we need to check in with or that might benefit from a small group at our school site. So we're working with our school-based staff and our administrators to ensure that all of our students, again, are getting the support that they need when they need it. And at the bottom, we have our second step. That's our social emotional curriculum that we provide K through H for all of our San Marcos Unified students that aligns with the national framework on social emotional learning, how to be responsible, how to manage your emotions, how to be self-aware, empathetic, how to be a good human, which is what we want all of our San Marcos Unified students to be. And with that, that is our presentation. I'm open to any questions you may have. And I also wanted to share that as a small token of our appreciation, we wanted to gift you all a little swag bag of some of the stuff that we've had. So we have some gifts for you, too.
Thank you. You know, I'd just like to make an observation. Obviously, you've been spending a lot of time and effort in this and we sure appreciate it. But you know, educating our kids has changed so much. And I think just the flexibility and the care that you have given the kids in our community. I mean, we appreciate it so much because obviously when kids have too much time on their hands and they're not doing well mentally, it affects all of us. And so I just, from the bottom of my heart, I know I can probably speak for all of us. We're really appreciative of everything that you've done. And we're so proud to help, you know, use some of our ARPA funds to help the emotional well-being of our kids because we really, I mean, they are our future. And I know that sounds cliche, but I know it takes a lot of effort to really switch gears as you have and done all that you've done. So anyway, I know that we appreciate it. Any other comments from the council? Sure. We'll start down with Councilmember Sinella.
Yeah, thank you for that presentation. And it's so impressive, the comprehensive effort that you're putting towards this very important matter. My wife is a school administrator with San Marcos Unified, so I probably have a little bit more insight on this issue than most. And I just can't stress enough how important it is. And just want to just, you know, very grateful for everything that you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Masgrove.
You know, excuse me, kids go through a lot of traumatic events and sometimes they go unnoticed. And that we have a process in place. You know, we think of family as those who come under our roof at the end of the day. But really, at that particular age, middle school, even the elementary and high school, they're second families when they go to school. They have their own social norms, their groups, they go through things together, they find common bonds, they find separations. So when something traumatic happens, whether it's at school or totally unrelated, not negativity, but there's always that scrutiny that comes with bearing yourself, I suppose. It's fantastic. So the outreach is great. If you just had the office, like when I went to junior high way back when, you could go to the council, but nobody ever did. But presenting this overtly so that it becomes part of the routine for the kids, I think is fantastic. So they don't have to feel like they're going to be ostracized for speaking out or asking that question. So thank you.
Thank you so much. And I think that just that visibility for all of our staff, you know, being out there at lunch, you know, they do that just to be that friendly face so that if something does come up, that they have, they know that they're part of our community here. Yeah, thank you.
And the confidence to talk to you about it, for sure.
Absolutely.
Deputy Mayor.
A couple of questions. First comment to compliment the district staff for putting this together and our staff, one, I think, in the back, Michelle, for taking the lead and working with all of you. So we really appreciate you doing this for the community because our kids are important to all of us. Couple of questions. You mentioned about a timely manner to connect kids. So what is, I mean, we all know the way typical insurance works, anyway. You call, it takes forever to get in to see somebody. Maybe it's a little different in the mental health world. But so what is a typical time of connection when you have a need? And sometimes they're very serious. They need an instant connection. How do you do that and how quick is that connection?
Yeah, that's a really great question. So in terms of, let's say, a student is in crisis, we'll get them that support right away. But as they're coming out of maybe either hospitalization or a suicide screening, and we recognize that that student needs that ongoing support through therapy, with the service of Care Solus, I could, for example, make what we call a warm handoff, connect them to Care Solus. They will generally get, the family parent will get a call that either that same day or within 24 hours. And their kind of ideal scenario is that they're connecting that student or family member with an appointment within 10 days. And obviously, if there's very specific asks, like I only want in person and I want someone that speaks a certain language, it might take a little bit longer. But what's great is that we can then connect them to that site-based support to check in on that student until, you know, they get their ongoing therapy as well. So we would never, for example, say like, oh, their appointment's in two months. Good luck with that. As, you know, as a caring professional, as that school-based mental health support, we want to ensure that we're connecting with that family and that student to ensure that they're safe at school, that they feel well. But as far as that therapy, they should hopefully have an appointment within 10 days.
Okay. And then you talked about the 400 handoffs, but do you have an idea at this point as far as the number of students that have been touched, that have reached out to get help? I'm sure it's obviously more than 400.
Yeah, no, for sure. Those warm handoffs are adult-initiated connections to the Care Solus specifically. And that's a really great question. I wish I could quantify that specifically. But because it's so multi-layered, you know, what we're seeing at the school-based level, we do collect that. We can check in to see how many student contacts there have been with a social worker, counselor. We get data from that Crisis Text Line. So to date, there's been approximately 50 students or 50 communications initiated since we started promoting it in January. We saw an uptick during spring break, which is actually good. They didn't have counselors or social workers that they can turn to. And I think that with data, right, what we probably expect to see is an increase that looks not good, like, ah, these people are reaching out. But that just means that we're doing a good job of promoting the resources that are available so that then we can
so that then we can then address that. So we are collecting those multiple data points. But as a whole, I think that just by being a tier-one support that mental health campaign, our goal is to reach all 19,000 students in our district with that universal preventative proactive support that they need. Because as we strengthen that universal support, that tier-one level support, you will see, research shows, a decrease in that need for that crisis intervention, that reactive support of like, oh, let's get them help right away. Because we're starting to de-stigmatize, we're supporting, we're building up their coping skills at that foundational level so that we see less of that higher need, which was what we were seeing after the pandemic.
Right. One last question. We all know in public agencies that we, school district and city and others, we get one-time money. And we create these programs, we've done it for years. And Tiffany's coming up. And so it's great that, you know, we're able to help for two years. But if this is hugely successful, what ideas do you have to be able to carry it on?
We have a couple of ideas. Our goal is that this becomes a self-sustaining program, that this becomes a model program that we are able to get grants for. The other piece of that is that as we see that mental health is such an important factor for our students, we are able to use our LCAP supplemental funds to supplement what we need. The idea is that these don't go away.
Right.
They don't go away.
Our funds may go away, but hopefully the program.
But the program does not go away.
Well, our support won't go away, though.
Right. The support just, the money may go away, but the support remains.
Well, yeah, I mean, definitely, you know, talking about it in the community and explaining to people. I mean, I personally have had, I've referred people to you because, you know, people are saying, hey, my child is dealing with a situation, and I've reached out to you all and, you know, been able to have that referral. So us just being educated about it, and thank you again for coming this evening. You know, us being educated about it and the community, we definitely want to help as much as we can by giving the referrals because, you know, sometimes people just feel comfortable coming to us because they know us, you know, we're out in the community, too. So, you know, we definitely want to help you in any way that we can, like that, for sure, long-term.
And just one last comment. I just want to say thank you again to Dr. Campbell and Michelle for spearheading this.
Absolutely. It has truly been an amazing partnership. And I want to say out loud to everyone, this is a model partnership. It is a model partnership for the county and for the state.
I hope you take it there.
Yes.
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 It takes a village to raise our kids. It does. Councilmember Nunez, did you have something?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. I also want to echo what's been shared. This is really a true collaboration. And I'm very proud that we were able to bring this to fruition and of the partnership. And so thank you for being here and for bringing us up to speed. I was at the San Diego County North Leadership where a presentation was made. So I did get to hear some of this information. So thank you for being here and sharing with us and with our residents. I do have a couple of follow-up questions to what has already been said. One of the, one of the things that I keep hearing about, especially with some of the Latino families, is the stigma that we still continue to have with mental health issues. So are you truly seeing a change? If you could talk a little bit about that. And then the part of it, also with respect to the actual students, if you are seeing a change in the way that they seek the services? That's what I hear, right? But obviously, I'm not in education, I'm not. But that is one of the issues that I hear about.
No, I appreciate that question. Actually, prior to becoming a school counselor, I was a family liaison. I'm always thinking about our families. Both of my parents are Salvadoran immigrants, so from El Salvador. And I always think through the lens of how would my families approach these conversations as well. We're really fortunate to have a wellness team comprised of mostly bilingual. I want to say four of our five wellness team members also speak Spanish. And they, too, have been having those delicate conversations with our families that are experiencing barriers to their students' mental health. And I think being, bringing that cultural sensitivity, cultural knowledge is really critical to all the supports that we provide to our students and our families. I didn't share, but all of our campaign material that we have is also in Spanish. That's really important for us. When our wellness team does home visits, we've created like door hangers that are both in English and Spanish to have those conversations. So I think that also, we see our families as partners as well. So as we were talking about building that sustainability, it's also building the capacity and partnering with our community members, working with our families to bring more family awareness. And so we're constantly thinking of what can we do next? What's the next step to engage our families? And kind of build that dual capacity, both as a district to understand and elevate the voices of our families, but also give them a platform to tell us the supports and services that they need. As far as students accessing the resources, given that we launched in January, again, making those student-centered, data-informed decisions, we did share a survey out to our students and our staff and our families about, at the onset of the campaign, how they currently access support if they need it. And our goal is to, again, resurvey just a few months later, six months later, before the end of the school year, to see if there's any changes in accessing support for themselves. And sometimes I think even the term "mental health", there's still some stigma around that. So we talk about wellness, we talk about social-emotional wellness. And so just being mindful of that language as well. But definitely, we are making those data-informed decisions by surveying them. And we'll continue to do that, too, so that we don't just make assumptions or guesses about how they're accessing that. So definitely looking at multiple data elements throughout the process is really critical to this work.
Thank you for that clarification. Another question. One of the issues that I consistently hear about from providers is the lack of individuals, professionals, mental health professionals that are available just in general. And in particular, those that might be able to offer services in Spanish or culturally sensitive. So as I think about, right, what you presented today, particularly with the CareSolus, I'm having a hard time, right, picturing this. So is CareSolus, are they sort of a broker for the mental health providers? Because what I'm really thinking through is, are these students actually getting services, the services that they need in that timely fashion? And is it responsive?
Yeah, that's a really great question, yeah. And I think that part of it, time will tell, right? You mentioned, I think, like that workforce shortage, which is definitely something that we're seeing across the state. I'm privileged to be the Chair of the California Association of School Counselors. And so we're having those conversations at the state level, too, about that workforce shortage and supporting the mental health needs of students. And as far as like that CareSolus, I guess the best way to describe it is almost like a concierge service that we connect them and they help families make all the phone calls necessary to make that connection with the care provider. We are constantly trying to get feedback from families and also our school-based staff to ensure that those families and students are getting connected. So when a connection or a warm handoff is created, we actually can see when a phone call is made, when an appointment has been set. And so we monitor as we're making those warm handoffs to ensure that that connection has been made. And what's great is that CareSolus, even once that appointment has been made, they will follow up with them to say, do you like your provider? How is that going? Is that a good match for you? Because we know that sometimes that first, you know, connection with the provider might not be the perfect match, and that's okay. There's others around them. So I think the reality of the situation, too, is that there is a certain, a limited number of folks available to provide that ongoing support. So if families are open to some of that virtual telehealth, then that opens a little bit more doors for them in terms of getting that care quicker. But I think it's also just having that ongoing conversation with them. And again, being that trusted person, that's that bridge. You know, we're bridge builders, I believe, in our schools as educators with that family to ensure, is this working out for you? If not, it's okay, let's figure it out together so that we can get you connected to the right support, where you feel comfortable talking to them and you feel that your child is getting the support that they need.
Thank you for clarifying that and thank you for being here, providing this information for our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Lysia. Thank you. I really appreciate all the hard work and the update because it helps us so that we can help you. All right, thank you. Okay, we have one more presentation from the 2023 San Diego County Fair presentation, which I want to call it the Delmar Fair, just because.
It's okay, you can call it the Delmar Fair.
I'm a San Diego County native. Every time, I have a very hard time getting that out. I just can't do it. But anyway, thank you so much.
You're not alone.
We have Katie Mueller, the Chief Operating Officer of the Delmar Fairgrounds.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Jones, and city council members and staff and residents for hosting me. I'm here today to invite the City of San Marcos to get out there and come to the San Diego County Fair, and I have a presentation.
But the theme this year?
The theme this year is "Get Out There."
Get out there, okay.
Get out there, yeah. Oh, here we go. So this is our theme, our official theme, and our logo and our website. I'm having issues. Yeah. So as I mentioned, the theme is "Get Out There." And it's really, oops, there we go. It's really a celebration of our county and state parks, as you mentioned, San Parkos. Fits in perfectly. But we are partnering with San Diego County Parks and California State Parks to present our theme exhibition this year. And it just really celebrates the diversity of the geography of San Diego County and how lucky we are to live in this county where there is so many different things to do, from the mountains to the oceans and everything in between. We actually are even having a "Get Out There" challenge. And we are encouraging San Diegans to visit their regional, local, county, state, any park in their communities, to take a selfie of yourself, hashtag "Get Out There." And then if you come to the Welcome Center at the fair, you can pick up a "Get Out There" challenge pin. You can also be entered in a drawing for a grand prize that'll be announced on July 5th. Some other things about the fair this year. This is our grandstand lineup. We have Train, Kevin Hart. Sundays are our Dia de la Familia, where we present Hispanic entertainment all day long. Carly Pearce, Lynyrd Skynyrd, Grupo Bronco, Boys to Men, Stephen Marley, Los Tigres del Norte, Nelly, Elle King and Randy Hauser, Alabama, Switchfoot, and of course, our famous fireworks show on July 4th. Also, in our paddock, we present our Party in the Paddock, which features a number of cover bands, as well as up-and-coming bands, every single night at the fair at 8:30 PM. Some of the things we do to celebrate diversity is have a huge diversity of events. So we have three different beverage festivals. We have Out at the Fair, where we celebrate LGBTQ culture. San Diego Bluegrass Society has a Day at the Fair. We have an Asian and Pacific Islander Festival as well, presenting food and entertainment from that culture. And then on June 24th is our 17th Annual Gospel Festival, where we feature gospel music throughout the fairgrounds and then a headliner that evening. But we're really, really proud of the agricultural presentation that we have at the fair. Oftentimes, the fair, the San Diego County Fair, is the only opportunity for youth especially to learn about agriculture in our very urban county. And so we take that responsibility very seriously. So we have an infield farm. If you haven't visited, I encourage you. We, kind of during the pandemic, it sort of went to seed, if you will. But we've put a lot of money and resources into bringing the farm back as an outdoor education learning center. California Grown, I know that's near and dear to your heart because Halandia Dairy helps us present that exhibit. And they also, we went in together and purchased a brand-new, state-of-the-art milking trailer, which we debuted during the pandemic. We were going to debut it in 2020, the fair got canceled. So we did get to debut it in 2021 at a small event that we had. But it's really, really, one of the most popular attractions at the fair is to watch a real cow be milked by a real machine. And Halandia Dairy helps us do that, and they present each day, as well as they donate milk and chocolate milk to our Don Diego Scholarship Fund. And they're just great supporters. I can't say enough nice things about what they do for our fair. So we're really proud to be in partnership with them. Of course, we have our livestock programs, 4H and FFA, that we'll be presenting again. We've got the Paul Eckes Junior Flower and Garden Show, which will be just spectacular. It's getting built right now as we speak. And we have an exhibit that we debuted last year called "The Horse Show Experience." And the public, anyone can go in and learn about how horses are trained and bred. And, you know, it's great for kids that are interested in maybe taking up horseback riding as a hobby. They can get connected to trainers. And it's presented by a local trainer, actually, up in Fallbrook. So it's a neat exhibit. And then, of course, lots of residents of San Diego County, San Marcos, too, love to participate in our competitive exhibit programs. It's really just a wonderful way to showcase local talent in our communities. We've got fine art, we've got gems and minerals, design of wood, photography, and home arts. And then we engage our youth in two primary ways. Our student showcase features sixth grade through community college projects. So we're really celebrating vocational education in student showcase. And then our best of pre-K through sixth features classroom projects from those grades and those teachers that enter the show. And then Plant, Grow, Eat is a program that we've done for over 20 years, where we deliver pot, soil, and seeds to classrooms between kindergarten and sixth grade. The kids grow the radishes or flowers or whatever they're going to grow in their classrooms. And then they come to the fair as part of a field trip. And they bring their produce, their harvest with them. And they are awarded ribbons for their participation. And through our Don Diego Scholarship Fund, we've actually been able to award grants to a number of Title I schools as well to help with bus transportation, as that gets harder and harder all the time. And then a couple of just fun things. Everyone likes to hear about what the new, these are two brand-new rides we're going to be featuring at the fair. One's so new that all we have is an artist rendition of it. And then we've got new foods. Everyone wants to know what the new crazy foods are. We've got deep-fried chicken pot stickers rolled in hot Cheetos, Tasty Papa's Locust, a peanut butter and jelly fried chicken sandwich, a block of fried mozzarella, and cheese on a stick with jalapeno poppers. So bring your tums. And then we've got some other fun foods. You know, everything is really hot right now, as long as it's Instagrammable and someone can share it with all their friends on social media. So everything's as visually appealing as it is tastefully.
Hot Cheeto, a chicken on a stick. What was that? A hot Cheeto, a chicken on a stick?
Yes. Hot Cheetos is all the rage now. You can get everything with hot Cheeto dust on it. And then we've got some parking options. You can always park for free at Torrey Pines High School every single day the fair is open. We've got our horse park property a mile down the road, which is only $10 with free shuttle service to the fair. And then you can save $5 by buying your parking in advance online. And then we've got a great transit option this year, so North County Transit. So North County Transit District has been our partner for quite a few years. And they present what we call the Fair Tripper. For the price of admission, you can also receive a free ride on the Coaster Sprinter or Breeze, whichever you choose to the fair. We have a shuttle that picks you up at the Solana Beach train station. You show them your ticket and you get a free shuttle ride to the fair. So it's a great alternative to driving and fighting with traffic and parking and all of that. You can just take the Fair Tripper. And this year also MTS is joining, joining that as well. So those can be purchased the same day you're going to go to the fair on the vending machines or their pronto app. And then admission, keep, admission, actually, we rolled it back last year and we've kept it the same this year. So during the week, it's $15. On the weekends, it's $20 for those over 12 years old. And then Kids' Day is on Fridays for youth ages six through 12. They get in free to the fair. And then we've got also some great discounts available through Albertson's, O'Reilly, Northgate Markets has a $10 off of our Hispanic Concerts coupon. Blast Pass, if you buy your carnival ride wristbands or tickets in advance, there's, you get a discount on those as well. And then Pay One Price Ride Days are really, really popular. Those are back on Wednesdays and Thursdays with a coupon at 7-Eleven and Speedway. So that's it for my presentation. I obviously can't cover everything that's happening at the fair in this short amount of time that we have. But if you visit the website at sdfair.com, you can find out all the details about the fair and choose the day you want to come. And for everyone that thinks, oh, the fair's so crowded. I hate crowds. Come early. We start off slow and then we end, end big. But so come early. Any questions?
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you so much for your, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you. And we'll hope to see you when we get out there.
Absolutely.
Okay. Next is moving on to the consent calendar. Do we have any items which any council members wish to pull? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to oral communications. We have four speakers. First speaker is going to be John Mosher, followed by Marlene Walder, followed by Lynn McGrew. And then Nicholas McCann will be after that. So John Mosher, come on down.
Good evening, all. I'm Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council Members, Jack, Helen, Bill. I wanted to talk to you tonight about our rent review ordinance. We learned last year after going through the process that while we have a good base in place for it, there were, there were items lacking as, as to help achieve a good result. I sent out some suggestions back in July. I resubmitted those recently. I also had Mike Gallow reach out. He reached out about something having to do with auditing. The reason I'm bringing this up is because responses he got and I got were that the city's working on something, but we won't know about it until something's presented to the public. And I'm here to respectfully request that we be included in this process. There's a lot involved. It's not just one park. There's a lot in our city, a lot in our state and a lot in our nation that face the same thing we do. So the further I've gone into it, the more I find it, it's just not a singular problem. My mind tells me it's best to find a solution that basically fits everybody. And I know we already have a good template in place. And I know with a few adjustments to that, we could set an example here like we do for a lot of the things that happen in this city. So that's what I'm asking is number one, to find out what's happening and be included in the process. So when we reach out to our parks, we all understand what's happening. Okay? The other thing is, last time I was here, I was talking to you about energy storage, energy saving, money, you know, how to save money for all of us. And what I found out was in talking to Barbara Boswell, that they were already working on some of the ideas that I had discovered that were going on back east in Arizona and also in Hawaii. So I'm waiting to see what happens on that. And, and I hope you don't mind, but I'm, I'm still digging into this process of how we can have energy savings for our homes or even carports with lightweight systems. And I met with Mr. Yorba. He spent a half an hour with me going over things that are already happening in the city and plans for the future. So we set up that communication pipeline to, to help our residents and also for other adjustments that I'm looking for in the mobile home parks and how we can do mass permits to do things to help bring us together. So he was very good about that. The other thing too on that was I know, Maria, we talked about getting together with maybe some of your constituents about some of the energy stuff. And what I learned is I'm still learning. I have a, a long way to go. So that's where I was looking to put you and Ed together and at the same time try and be involved in it so that when our residents reach out to us, I have some answers. But also I can keep learning about what's happening with this process. The other thing was that, I don't know, Mike, you probably got the same notice I did today about our Cougar Girls softball team that, that won their regional out here and now they're going to Nationals. I think they start Thursday morning. So luckily I went to Palomar College and then Cal State San Marcos, a little bit older student, but it's nice to see both of them. And then the girls from Palomar were here. So it'd be nice to see when these girls finish up or these young women finish up. Be nice to see them here for a presentation too. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. And Jack, if we could have staff just reach out and let Mr. Mosher know where we're at on things. We are very limited in our scope being that it was voted in by the residents of San Marcos. But we certainly want to make it as painless as possible.
Well, I know there's two options.
Yeah.
One is to work through, you have the ability, the way the ordinance is written, to make adjustments to it and then bring it to us, represent it, just like we do here at the normal city council meetings. The other is to take it to the voters to create something on top of that. And to me, it makes more sense to use what we already have and, and just make it stronger. So.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for your feedback. Maureen Walder, Marlene Walder, sorry, Marlene, followed by Lynn McGrew, Nicholas McMahon, and then Shane Harris.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and council members. Marlene Walder from San Marcos Mobile Estates. But many of my complaints are very similar to parks that are owned, where the individuals own it. But unfortunately, they're not getting along well with their HOAs. In our case, our management and owner cried poverty all the time. But when we went for the rent review two years ago, the streets were to be fixed and it's a joke. They have torn up one street with four big holes making egress and back and forth really awkward because it's a single lane now. And if people park on the street, you can't get through that street. But the holes have been there since, I believe, December. Maybe February though, because it was after the rains started. I don't know when the rains sort of ended. The tree branches that were supposed to be removed were, were trip hazards are still there. The street that members from the city came out and looked at, it's now more like a hole. It's just falling apart because that wasn't included in the money they spent. I could honestly say it was the worst job I've ever seen and supposedly it was the best company. The slurry seal was a joke. The sides are coming away from, and I forget what you call the gutters. Thank you. The gutters and it's almost, well, it's more than a half inch, but it's almost an inch away, which makes no sense at all that it has contracted that, shrunk that much. Also, no one from the city has contacted me over the window issue that I had talked about on the wall that's on the street. And I understand that it's the park's responsibility, but I never got a follow-up and I've included my phone number now in the last two times. And that has been five years now, I believe, that the city put in that wall. I don't think it was, I think it was before COVID. And the wall is, you know, becoming a problem from workmanship. But the worst part is that the windows that have been broken have not been replaced and the rubber stripping in the windows that are missing, they never came out to do anything about it, the park. And I can't keep asking them because it goes in the circular file, my complaint, because, oh, we, we took care of that. No, they came out and looked at it and said they'd come back. But that was more than a, two years ago because COVID was on. Soon as COVID's over, we're going to do it. So that's my complaint. But I'm hearing complaints about the same thing. The pool heater keeps going out, but the jacuzzi's still not working. And these are all things that the park says they keep spending money to fix, but they're not, they're not fixing anything. They're spending money for their other park that they own. And their rent's been cheaper and everything else than ours. Anyway, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Marlene. Next speaker is Lynn, Lynn McGrew, followed by Nicholas McMahon and then Shane Harris.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and everybody that's on the board. I hoped I wasn't going to be coming, but obviously I ended up here. And part of it, I feel, is bad communications. The person that was negotiating the rent control basically shuffled some dates. And as a result, everybody that was supposed to be at the election or the committing ourselves to a rent control, instead of being the 26th, it was the 25th, which is when you guys go ahead and meet. I kind of halfway feel that it was kind of an negotiated kind of bad maneuver in that somebody in the city had told Mike that if he didn't settle for the 5.7 that was offered, it'd probably end up being 10. One never knows. Okay. But the thing is, is as Marlene said, the monies that you guys go ahead and, went ahead and allocated last year for the streets and things was a real joke. And that was the only money that they spent other than, I know that she said that she had to have a certain amount of money for different projects to keep things decent and nice and safe and, and not have any hazards to the seniors that we're living in here. She requested $30,000 for driveways, of which she spent $2,300 for two patch jobs of asphalt in two driveways. And I know if you come through and see them, it's a real joke because basically there are a lot of driveways that need to be done. And we've had some that only cost $4,500 for cement. Any of the real pretty ones that you see are basically because they're flipping the mobile homes, pulling new ones in and getting rid of the old ones. Or they're flipping them and the guys that are doing the work are putting in the cement driveways. So it's absorbed in the cost of the mobiles. Used to be able to buy one for $89,000. Now they're going for $414,000. And it's due to the fact that we've got all these people that are dumping their properties and moving in there because they think it's such a good deal. You know, they only have to pay $500, $600, $700 worth of rent on a mobile that they don't own the property on. So they don't have to worry about the taxes other than what they have for their, their home now, not realizing that, hey, when you downsize, you're really downsizing when you go into a mobile. The thing that we've also done is our group, the HOA, which is really not an HOA because we do not own our property. All we own is our mobile homes and we pay taxes on them. It's like a boat. The property itself is owned by somebody else. So what they do is they're supposed to get a fair and equitable profit, which I think is really absorbent at this time. If I see something being fixed, I have no problem with that. But piddly items, you know, like she's talking about the sound barriers on the walls. We have two of them. The things that were done that have not been accomplished, like the jacuzzi has been out for seven months. And that's ridiculous. They just got a bid. Now I went in and checked in the office and it turned out that nobody put in for a, an ability of going ahead and continuing it with the city because evidently there's some things that they have to get clarified. The HOA has bought rat traps to get rid of rodents in the park. The park should have been doing this, not us. We also put in and bought security cameras for the front entryway because we have a lot of people that come in, indigents and stuff, use the showers, use the facilities, vandalize, have broken into the, the actual clubhouse and, and gotten monies and things out of there. Use the restaurant rooms and camp out in them. We found some people in the morning in there camping out. But again, that's something that the park should have been taking care of, not us. We've instituted our own security as far as like drive around at night and taking care of and making sure that there aren't people wandering the streets because we do not have a gate in the front. We have one in the back, but no security gate in the front. So we are basically having to deal with all of these things that should be, I would think, for a senior citizen that's retired. We're on fixed income. So if we lost a spouse, we're now on half of our fixed income. And so basically, maybe we, they ought to incorporate some of this mental health with elderly people that probably need the mental support for what they're going through. I mean, we went through it when we were growing up and our parents took care of us for 30 years, maybe, maybe a little less if they were lucky. But now that they're seniors, they basically don't have that support. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Next speaker is Nicholas McMahon, followed by Shane Harris.
Hello. On May 9th, San Marcos residents spoke at the city council meeting, the last one we had, about child safety at city parks. And I'd like to take the opportunity to thank some of the members here for their response, especially Sheriff's Captain Kevin Ralph for meeting with the residents who attended the last council meeting, a council member, Ed, for meeting individually on the 10th, and also the Sheriff's Department for hosting a community safety meeting on the 18th. From that, we learned that the sheriff's actions for us was to increase patrols at city parks. And our crime prevention specialist, Miniu Brown, recommended gauging interest among the Santa Fe Hill residents for a community watch meeting. Now, there is an effort underway to inform the Santa Fe Hills residents of a community watch meeting and gauge that interest. However, this morning, on the walk to Paloma Elementary, when I was walking with my daughter, I noticed that the Cerro de Las Posas Park sign adjacent to the Paloma School was vandalized. I reported it on the city app. And it's a new thing for me because I haven't seen any tagging in Santa Fe Hills since I've been there as a resident for the last two years. I'm concerned about increased criminal or gang activity at the city parks. What infrastructure improvements can be made to deter crime at city parks, especially parks like Las Posas that are adjacent to schools? I do have some recommendations and maybe we can think this through, is additional signage to indicate parks are closed at night. Some of this existing signage doesn't enter the direction in which most of the traffic comes in. Landscaping to increase visibility into parks. And adequate lighting. There's no street or walkway lighting on board adjacent to the Las Posas Park. It's just completely dark at night. And perhaps cameras to deter and provide evidence of criminal activity. Sunset Park does have cameras. Many of the parks here in the city do not. How can they be installed in the other parks? So in summary, I'd just like everyone to know that if crime is committed in a city park, it should be seen. And how can we make this happen? Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. One thing that I would like to tell you is we also have graffiti track, or I'm sorry, graffiti. One thing that I would like to tell you is we also have graffiti track, I'm sorry, graffiti hotline that you could also call, and I can give you that number. It's 760-591-9100. I actually call it pretty often if I ever see any little anything. Graffiti is definitely something that we try to get taken care of pretty quickly. We have a whole fleet of graffiti abatement folks. And another thing that we're part of is the graffiti tracker, and so what they do is they go out, they take a picture of it, and then it goes into a database throughout the county in case, a lot of times graffiti is kind of, it moves from city to city. And so, you know, they could be passing through, and they just decide to tag something so that they can leave their mark. And then what happens is if it becomes from a, what's the word I'm looking for? No, it goes up to a felony from a misdemeanor, sorry, I couldn't think of it for one second. When it becomes a felony, because they have monikers, which, you know, is kind of their tag signature or whatever, when that actually becomes a felony and then they catch someone, they can go back to all of the instances that they've had. So it's a really good thing that's helped us. But helping us, we appreciate you letting us know when there is graffiti, whether you call the graffiti hotline or you use our app to do that, because we can't be every single place at every single time. And so we really appreciate our community helping us be the eyes and ears of what's happening in the community. And then I think that's it that I wanted to say, but we really appreciate your feedback. And I know that anytime there is graffiti, you know, we track it and we're, you know, always watching that. So, and many times when it's on private property and it's something that gets hit on a regular basis, then what we do is we actually have an agreement where they let us know that we can just go ahead and take care of it in advance, and we don't have to get an authorization to cover that up. Thank you for your comments, really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then our next speaker is Shane Harris.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Council, and I just want to thank all of the folks, residents of San Marcos, for being here and for speaking out on the issues that are important to you. It's just so good to see people civically engaged and advocating for the things that are important to them in this community. It's a pleasure to be here. I was here earlier to meet with Mayor Jones. I've been meeting with a number of leaders in the northern San Diego region, and I decided to stick around and see what's going on here in one of the places that I lived when I was in the child welfare system. My name is Shane Harris. I'm the president and founder of the People's Association of Justice Advocates, a national civil rights organization based here in San Diego and Washington DC. I also am a former foster youth of San Diego County. And I'm here to talk about National Foster Care Month. I know that Mayor Jones is very passionate about this issue, as well as some of the other council members who have expressed care and concern for our foster youth. And as a former foster youth, this issue is deeply, deeply important to me, because I know so many of our kids around this county deserve to know that every council, every elected official in our region cares about them and will fight for them. Many of these kids are facing the odds in all kinds of areas, whether it's education inequities, or whether it's losing their parents like I did. And so it's such a true and real issue that is not partisan at all, it's not political, but it really calls to question the leadership of our elected leaders, and especially to lift up our foster youth. So I'll talk just a little bit about this. I grew up in the foster care system. I went through 13 years of San Diego's foster care system and lived in eight different placements while I was in care. One of the placements that I was in was here in San Marcos, another placement in Escondido, where I finished up high school at San Pasqual Academy. Many of you may remember, we were in a deep and passionate fight to save San Pasqual Academy just up our road here, and we did. And it was leaders like Mayor Jones who spoke up, even though they were not on the county Board of Supervisors, to say that we should keep and preserve spaces like that for youth who are older, who don't have, who can't be taken in by foster parents because of their age. Most parents are not, you know, willing to take in older kids. And so there's space needed for these kinds of youth to be able to have another place to go, like San Pasqual. So we're happy that we kept that open. But as a former foster youth, I've seen a lot of the challenges that our young people face while in care. I personally saw the education inequities very real. I personally saw the challenges of cultural competency and the challenges of ensuring that you transition out of care with support that a family would provide to a kid. And so there's a lot of pressing challenges that we have, and we need people to step up. In our county, we have over 2,500 children in our foster care system from all kinds of backgrounds. Nationally, we know that over 20% of our foster youth go homeless when they emancipate the system. One in four foster youth go homeless when they emancipate the system. We know that by the age of 24, that so many of our foster youth are unemployed. And so there's some critical, critical challenges meeting our foster youth. Just up the road here, we have Cal State San Marcos, which is home to so many of our foster youth who end up going to college. It's been one of those colleges and universities that have really amplified and opened doors for our foster youth. So I just want to encourage us to continue to lift up our foster youth across our region and to do what we can to open doors for them. We need to see continued expanded transitional housing programs for our foster youth. We need to continue to see people stepping up to become foster parents. Right now, we have a major gap in that area. A lot of people are perplexed by inflation and some of the challenges, and they're not, the passion wasn't there like it was to foster. So I just want to encourage the San Marcos community to step up in any way that we can for our foster youth. If you're out there and you're saying, I want to become a foster parent, contact the Health and Human Services Agency at the county. And I brought a blue ribbon for the mayor. That's the color of foster care awareness, and I just want to encourage us to lift up foster care awareness. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. And I just wanted to give a shout out to National Core, because at their last affordable housing development, they actually set aside nine units for transitional youth and homeless youth as well, as they were aging out of the system from being foster youth. So that was something great that they did right here in our city, so I was really proud that they were able to do that. And with that, we will be moving on to our reports, maybe 1, 2, 3, 4 requirements. And Sandag is the first one. At our last meeting, I had to leave a little bit early, but Councilmember Musgrove filled in for me the last hour, I think, and a half of that meeting. But the notable, most notable item that we had was our budget, big budget. I had some questions on it. I couldn't support it personally myself. There were some things that I didn't agree with, one being that there was an allocation of $1 million on something that we've already spent or already allocated $40 million on, and that is the central mobility hub that we don't actually have a location for, which I took issue to. And we've already spent almost 25 of that $40 million. And then when I started asking about it, I realized that we had some unused, what was it, legal funds, almost $3 million that had also been allocated to that. So we were asking for another $1 million to spend on a 42 or almost $43 million project that we don't even have any actual location for, and we've already spent almost $25 million on it, and we have no work product or a location. So I took issue to that. The amount of money that we're spending in our county on, I don't know, I just, I feel like it's government waste, is astounding to me, and so I couldn't support it. And I think you ended up not supporting it that day as well. Anyway, a lot more is going to be coming forward at our next meeting. We did talk a little bit about what's coming forward. You might want to add to that, because you're on the Audit Committee, Councilmember. Did you want to add to that?
Just kind of segueing into that, when the subject of the central mobility hub came up, you know, they talk a lot about getting people from the airport to a downtown central mobility hub. So I asked the question, why do we have to focus on downtown San Diego? Whenever we have issues with the airport, we always talk about brownfield as an option. I really think they need to look at decentralizing and have several hubs so that people can get where they need to be a lot less expensively. And if the issue about reducing our vehicle miles traveled, we need to decentralize our employers, quit incentivizing everyone to come into central San Diego, and start working to get these, you know, larger corporations that hire employees out to some of our areas where we have land, where we can reduce the number of miles people are commuting. So, you know, the whole issue is to clean up our environment by reducing vehicle miles traveled, but how about the burden on the people that have to commute, that have to buy the gasoline and sit in traffic all this time? Quit focusing on a central location. And when I brought that up, I got some eyebrows raised and looking at me, and I said, you know, there's a lot of money to go around. We're spending a lot of money on digging tunnels under downtown San Diego and those concepts, so start looking into a little more practical way to get our people around and get our economy moving.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to League of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove.
We meet on the 12th of next month.
And there's a lot of legislation coming forward. We saw on our legislative platform this evening. Still, the state trying to take away more local control, as they always are, I'm always talking about that, and also expanding by right development, which I take issue to. We are opposing all of the legislation that takes away local land use authority, as always. But anyway, keep us abreast as to what's going on with those, if you don't mind.
Definitely.
Okay, North County Transit District, report, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, we had a meeting on May 18th and had an update on our budget for July 2023 to June 2024, so the 24 budget. We, per board policy, are required to have a balanced budget. We do have a balanced budget. It is about $185.5 million for operating only. The, North County Transit is typically very conservative when they budget, so we always budget the revenues and expenditures. The plan does include, they have some contingencies in there built in in case reception, session.
Don't say the word. Don't say the word.
I know, I know.
But we talk about it all the time.
So we've kind of built into that. And then the other thing that's coming in for our 24 budget is, I've mentioned in the past that we are taking on, we contract out for some of our services, we're bringing some of the services back, so they will be North County Transit employees again, and that will be for maintenance of way employees, maintenance of signals, and facilities maintenance functions. So we've incorporated all of that into the 24 budget, and also anticipating increased fuel costs. And then for the five-year budget, I've also talked about that, you know, we contract out for our bus operations. We are analyzing about bringing that back in also. So incorporated into our five-year budget will be the possibility, if the board, at whatever point in time, it won't be this year, decides to bring that back in. So very conservative in how we budget, but we are $185.5 million for operating only.
And any luck on getting more drivers?
It's getting better.
Is it getting better?
It's getting better.
That's good, that's good. And then when do they believe, or you might not know this, when all the routes will be back? The regular routes?
I'll have to look at my past notes.
That's okay.
Let me get back to you on that. I don't want to give you the wrong month.
Yeah, no, that's okay, because we still have some routes in San Marcos that are not back to, you know, being open and used.
In several areas.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, next is North County Dispatch, Joint Powers Authority, Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you, Mayor. We are scheduled to meet tomorrow morning at 10:00, so I will be there and report back at our next meeting.
Okay. Green Energy, or Clean Energy Alliance. I did notice, when I got, I get like an email from SDG&E saying, oh, this is what your projected bill is going to be. It has it broken down of my gas, my SDG&E transmission, and then my Clean Energy Alliance. So tell us a little bit about what's going on with that, if you have anything to report.
So when you look at your bill, you'll see an extra line for Clean Energy Alliance, and what it signifies is not the distribution. Those are the transmission lines. SDG&E is going to charge you and anyone that stays with SDG&E the same rate for the transmission lines. Where you save your money is on the acquisition of the power. So while it looks like there's an additional charge, it's actually in lieu of which you would otherwise be paying SDG&E for that power. So whatever the rate is per kilowatt hour, you use 20 kilowatt hours in a month and you pay $50, you'll pay a slightly less amount for Clean Energy. And the thing to really consider is the state mandate requires by 2035 that we have renewables, clean energy and renewables. We are sitting right at between 75 and 85% with all the constituent consumers on the Clean Energy, as far as their Clean Energy allocations. And SDG&E doesn't, they had a program where they were offering it, but they got out of that. Right now, they're below 50%. So they're charging more for less, if you want to look at it that way. And they will eventually have to catch up. They're simply following the state guideline year by year. This is the minimum amount until they get to that same point where we are right now. So eventually, that gap will widen, where those who are within either San Diego Community Power or the North County Clean Energy Alliance will see a bigger gap on the reduced rate that you're paying as opposed to SDG&E. And that really comes down to the nonprofit Joint Powers Authority that manages the Clean Energy Alliance and San Diego Community Power versus a for-profit corporation, which is SDG&E, that has shareholders. And I should just, just two seconds. The question, Mayor, then, will be my report, and we meet this Thursday. Thank you.
Okay.
I was just going to add that we are meeting on the 30th, down at Oceanside City Hall.
Okay. Moving on to business, city council business visits. So Flora Flora, Councilmember Sunella and I visited that yesterday. It was a very cool business. It was founded in 2021 by Sarah Close, who is, came up with the name Flora Flora. It's a sustainable hair care brand that doesn't use any plastic containers. So if you see those colorful, wavy-looking, it looks like, honestly, I think it looks like a little vase on the right-hand side, that's actually a bar of shampoo or conditioner. It's not plastic, it's 100% like a bar of soap, but it's shampoo or conditioner. So it was honestly very fascinating. So while attending college in Hawaii, Sarah saw plastic pollution firsthand and how it pollutes the beaches and kills sea life. So she decided to take it upon herself to reduce the environmental impact without sacrificing the performance or the aesthetics of the product. So she began formulating recipes in a crock pot, might I add, in 2020, and started testing products with her family and friends in 2021. Her first sales took place at Farmer's Market in Eiffel, in the middle. Those are her mixing machines that took place of the actual crock pots. Anyway, it was fascinating. Anyway, she's located in La Casa Meadows, and she's been at her current location for a year. And last week, she actually got a big contract. There's me, okay. You have to look, and there's actually two things that were also in that bag. So that was two shampoos, two conditioners, four, so it was two hair oils, and then two hair masks, which is like a deep conditioner, and two little, well, actually biodegradable holders for the products on top of it. So there's actually a lot of, a lot in that little tiny bag. So there's actually a lot in that little tiny bag, which was interesting because it was so lightweight. And each bar is supposed to wash your hair about 50 times. So it's a lot of product in a little tiny space of that little tiny bar. So anyway, they're highly concentrated. They use 80% less water than standard shampoo and conditioner products, no plastic. And they have five different shampoos for different hair types, and then also four different scents, and then also one conditioner, which is very versatile for all hair types. And did you want to finish the rest of that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Thank you. This was incredible, actually.
It really was.
We've done a number of these business visits, but this was probably the most interesting one. And as you mentioned, Mayor, she's off of Melrose and Rancho Santa Fe. And I don't know why this came to a surprise to me, but when, you know, in listening to what she had to say about how, you know, what motivated her to do her business and get started, the majority of the substance that's inside of a shampoo bottle is just water. And so essentially, what she did is she just removed the water, kept all of the active ingredients, if you will, and by doing so, she was able to get rid of that plastic bottle. So that was just incredible. She was so passionate about what, there's another picture, and you can tell she's pretty young, too, which was really impressive. But she's so passionate about what she's doing. She's got two employees so far. They're growing very quickly. She's trying to, right now, kind of overcome some manufacturing challenges because of all the growth that they're having. This new contract with Whole Foods is both very exciting for her, but also, you know, it's daunting because they need to produce a lot of product to meet the demand. So I'm really proud of what she's doing and honored to have her in our community, and it was just so, just exciting to meet her.
And it also says, "Not made in San Diego, made in San Marcos."
That's correct.
We like that. Yeah, it was, that she puts out on there, because a lot of businesses have to say they just call it San Diego, which we're the upside of San Diego, so we really deserve to have our name on there. So she was, and she's very excited to be in San Marcos and call San Marcos home. So that's a testament to our being very business-friendly. Anything else you'd like to add? Okay, well, one more thing that we did, all of us, today, is we went on a tour of the new Kaiser Permanente Hospital. It was definitely a good one. Kaiser, do we have a picture of that? It's a beautiful facility. It really is. I was so excited to go on it because I remember back when we, well, when I was selling new homes back in the day before kids, when I was just a young girl, we had this big map, and it had Kaiser Permanente and Scripps Hospital on there. Scripps is no longer actually building a hospital. They are building medical offices. But there we are, in the actual new Kaiser Permanente, in the food area. And if you look up on the wall behind us is a picture, well, it's actually a mosaic of Lake San Marcos, and then it has our signature hills, and then also our trails, our signature trails. Definitely something that's unique to San Marcos of how they wrap around in our hillsides. So there we are, right before we were starting the tour. And then I think we might have another one. Oh, we have a couple. Okay, what have we got? Let's see. So that's actually in one of the rooms. The rooms are really cool, and they actually have that big screen that's behind us, and that is where a patient has a little keyboard and they can order all their food. There's like, it could be like just, and anyone jump in if you have something to say about all of this. But I thought the rooms were really very neat. And it's 206 beds for all of you out there. And is it 38 emergency bays? I think I might have that right. I think it's 38.
38 or 39, with the possibility of 12 more.
Going up to like, yeah, yeah. I think it's like 50 at the high end that they're planning on doing. But it's the same amount of emergency bays as their Kearney Mesa Hospital that has, I want to say, maybe 45 more beds, something like that. Anyway, we all were lucky enough to go on a tour today. It's really beautiful, such a gem for our community.
If you go back to that last picture.
Okay.
One of the kind of neat technological advances with this new hospital is above the TV. So that TV is more than just a television for the patient. It has all of the data that the nurses would, you know, they would normally put it like on a whiteboard or something, and so that now it's all digital. But above that, you see like a speaker and a camera. And that's a way for the patient to communicate with their doctors, who may not necessarily be there at the hospital, but also a way for them to communicate with their family members who could check on them from home, which is really nice, too. I hadn't seen that before in a hospital room.
No, they don't have that at the Kearney Mesa Hospital. That's something new that they added, even though that was built, I want to say, five or six years ago. And by the way, this is their 40th hospital in the Kaiser Permanente network that they have, and I think...
The other exciting thing is that they're going to, this hospital's going to bring net new 1,000 jobs to San Marcos.
Yep, 1,000 new, high-paying job. On top of the, their regular outpatient, yeah, their regular outpatient medical offices, their pharmacy, their urgent care, on top of that, it's 1,000 new high-paying jobs, which is great. And I got a text from Max, you guys don't even know this yet, Max via Lobos, and guess what? They are Platinum Lead certified. They just got notification this afternoon. So not only is it a beautiful building, but it's also an efficient, energy-efficient building on top of it.
I thought you said they were going for gold.
It's platinum.
Okay.
It's platinum, and they just, they just got, they just got notification today.
He did say gold today during the presentation, but maybe they got upgraded.
Yeah, okay.
Well, he texted me and said that they did, so it was really good news.
Good. And the other thing that was very interesting is there, they have additional, is it like 12,000 square feet or more of empty space to grow? So they have, they expect future growth, and they have built in space so that when the time comes, however many years or decades that is, the space will be there. So I thought that was very smart.
Which is pretty unusual, because they've never, they've never done something like that. So they gave up their offices in order to do that, so that they could have that growing space. So yeah, I double-checked, Lead Platinum.
Okay.
I just double-checked, just to make sure. Now you had me questioning myself. Okay, City Manager, Jack Griffin, Creek District Project. We have a date, a tentative date on the books.
T tentative date in August for a ribbon cutting. The finish line's coming into view. If you've been out there, you might have noticed some of the formwork, the wood around the bridge is being pulled off, which is a good sign for the stability of the bridge. Also signifies we're getting close to the end. Continuing to work on the wall along Discovery in front of the Mobile Home Park, the sound wall. Continuing to finish up the utilities on Vera Vera Cruz, and continuing to do the planting in the habitat areas. So all of the final pieces of it are coming together.
So I just wanted to say, our potential ribbon cutting is the first week of August, and the ninth is when Kaiser Permanente is going to open.
Yeah, so we're looking at the first Friday in August, I think.
Yeah, the fourth.
I forget what the date is, the fifth or the fourth.
Yeah. Anyway, exciting, because it'll be right around the same timeframe.
I have a question, Jack. Ask it every time. What about opening Discovery to Rush? Do we have a...
So it's not ours to decide.
I know.
It's a developer's built project, not a city project. We're still hoping by the end of this month.
Okay.
But that's only a week away.
Right.
But that's the goal, is by the end of the month.
Okay. And then if every, all the stars light up and line up, and the roads line up and everything, would Discovery open all the way to, all the way through, come maybe when we open the bridge?
That's the goal. We would open Discovery as a through street from Twin Oaks over with the opening of our project.
Okay, okay.
Hopefully before Kaiser opens, because that would be ideal, for sure.
Oh, one more Kaiser comment was, I thought it was interesting. He shared that they had our fire department over to look at things, and they originally had four bays for ambulances, and they increased it to 10, based on their input. So I thought that was good.
Yeah, definitely responding to our fire department, because what we, oh, and one thing, I was thinking this was right, but I did bring it up, is that if you are, even if you're not a Kaiser Permanente member, if you have, if you need to have immediate medical care, they will make sure that you are stabilized before you go off to your regular health hospital where you would go that your insurance pays for. They really want to be a good member of the community. They really have done such a great job, you know, investing in like our local community, our Chamber of Commerce, our Boys and Girls Club, all these different organizations really entrenching themselves in North County. They have about, well, in San Marcos and then beyond, too, in North County, they have about 180,000 subscribers to Kaiser Permanente. I know I'm not personally a Kaiser Permanente subscriber, but I know that even the city offers that as one of our healthcare options. And they, I think it's really good, they're not planning on building anything for quite some time, but it's really good, I think, that they have something here in North County, finally, that's going to be opening up. And again, 1,000 jobs is quite significant for our community, so that's exciting. So with that, any council commentary? Nope. With that, this meeting is adjourned, then.